All right, everybody. Welcome to the May 16, 2023 council meeting. Call the media.
For order, we're going to lead a pledge of the flag by our very own Kyler Berry and Josh Murray. Josh, tell us what to do.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party. We stand as one nation, not a god, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done, Josh. Appreciate that. A roll call, please, Lisa.
Councilmember Holworth.
Here.
Councilmember Lesser.
Here.
Councilmember Napolitano.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Here.
Mayor Montgomery.
I am here as well. Our next item is ceremonial calendar. I'll let for it to pop up behind me. Presentation certificates of recognition to Monica Chun, Lisa Newman, Alex Chun, Justin Newman, Kay O'Neil, Laura Meyer, Luke O'Neill, Manhattan Beach Police School Officer Donovan Torres, Michael Hamilton, for their commitment and dedication to promoting e-bike safety. Anyone here not in the program? Let me make sure.
How you doing?
So Mayor Pro Tem.
You guys grow.
You guys stay right there. It's good. Not so worried. This will all be filmed and available by DVD. So you're okay. So most of you know this is National Bicycle Safety Month. I know all of you know that, but to everybody else out there, it's a big deal in the city. E-bike safety since COVID, no one knew what an e-bike even was. And now we all know what e-bike is. What they don't know is e-bike safety. And that's all because of Mayor Pro Tem Joe Franklin has led the way to inform every resident with an e-bike, those that want to buy an e-bike, those that actually ride an e-bike, what safety is. So the city is dedicated to not only enforcement, Officer Torres and Officer Hamilton are leading the pledge and to make sure we inform everyone in the city about wearing a helmet, riding safe. I think the best part I've seen is riding three kids riding on a bike, on an e-bike. Now, I couldn't get three of them on an e-bike, but only one of them had a helmet on. Should have been a long ways to go to inform everyone what e-bike safety is, but it's a great step. So what you guys have done has kind of led the way. So Mayor Pro Tem Franklin, why don't you read out, hand me the certificates. And then we're going to read them out, and you can give them all, you can give them all city pens. Luke O'Neill.
There you go.
All right, good timing. Laura Meyer. There you go. Kai O'Neil. Michael Hamilton's not here. Officer Donovan Torres. You might have a few of these on your wall by now. Justin Newman. All right. Alex Chun. Second time you guys have been, all right? Second or third?
Second.
Second, all right. Gita O'Neil.
Oh, Gita. Yeah, got to come up.
Thought it was just the kids.
You get your, yeah.
Thank you.
Face the camera, they'll see across the world. There you go. Lisa Newman. Thank you, Lisa. Tell Greg we said hi. Monica Chun. Where's Monica?
We'll give it to Alex.
Okay, Alex. Anybody else, Joe?
I think that's it.
You're going to post this on Nextdoor, right?
Yes, it'll be on Nextdoor in a few minutes, so.
Nextdoor?
On behalf of the entire council, we want to thank you all for what you've done and a big round making us all feel safer. And we'll give you all a round of applause for what you're doing to make us all feel better. So wait, we're going to do a picture with all of you. We're all done. Don't go anywhere. I won't go nowhere. Alex, thanks.
Thank you for everything.
Dinner off.
Well done.
Rice you have later.
Gita, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Took a lot of time.
Hold on, we're going to take a picture of you guys.
Okay, so come on in.
All right, all of council. Joe?
Okay, so get back. Well, as long as I'm pumped up, I'm between you guys. No, stand in front. Stand in front. I haven't known anything about e-bike safety.
All right, so do this, National Bike Safety. All right. National Bike Safety. You want to hold that in front of you guys? Now.
You get over there. I'll get over here.
Or no, don't ever lie.
Ready?
I hear a voice.
One, two, three.
Cameras down. Everybody good? Greg, you're all good? All right.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. See how you're doing? Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, you guys.
That's all right.
No, no, that's good. No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Yeah.
Thanks so much for treating us.
That's all right.
Just a reminder, folks, when you, just a reminder, when everybody else complained about e-bikes, not just Nextdoor. This group set up and made a difference for us, so that's why it's important to recognize them. Thank you. Appreciate it. That clears the room. Stack that. That is why I wore a tie today. So that explains it. We'll let them catch up for a second. Anybody else? All right. How about approval of agenda and a waiver of full reading of ordinances? Item E, council. Some move. Move by Councilmember Lesser, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Joe Franklin. Roll call, please.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you all. Item F, city council community organization announcements. We're going to hold that for a second. Mayor presentation of Beach Cities Health District Campus Project. City Manager Bruce Simone.
Yes, actually, I'd like to introduce Tom Backley, CEO of Beach Cities Health District, who will give a brief presentation on the project.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. Tom Backley, CEO of B C's Health District. Good to see you. Good to be here tonight. And yeah, I want to give you an update on what's happening at the Health District and specifically what's happening at our campus there, the old South Bay Hospital. As all of you know, in 1955, the voters from Manhattan Beach, Hermosa, and Redondo Beach came together and formed a Health District and built the hospital. Some of you know it well.
I was born there.
If, if all goes well, we'll talk about this in a moment. Maybe you can complete the circle of life there. We'll see what happens.
Well, early.
Many, many years from now, right?
Many, many, many years from now.
There you go.
Goes my support.
I decided to lead with that. That might have been a mistake. So anyways, let's talk a little bit about what's happening at, at the campus. As, as many of you know, the Health District has been around over 60 years. For the last 25 years, we focused on preventative health. So as a Manhattan Beach resident, you pay property tax. That's roughly a little over a third of our budget. The rest of our revenue comes from partnerships that we have as well as lease revenue from the old hospital building. So you can see where we're looking here. We're on Prospect Avenue. The two buildings up front were developed after the hospital closed, and so those are leased out. We have land leases for those buildings. And then you can see the main building is in the middle there. Silverado is, is kind of to the right. And I want to just talk a little bit about what we're planning to do. As many of you know, we've done lots of things over the last 25 years. We've had success with reducing childhood obesity in Redondo. We've had the Blue Zones Project. We've recently opened up Al Cove, which is a youth mental health facility. And so all of these things we're doing in the name of preventative health and community health. And then you come onto our campus, which is a sea of asphalt, and there's just kind of a big thud. It, it doesn't match who we are and how we've evolved. So we've evolved over the last 60 years, but our, our campus really has not. And so we want to create a place where people can come, be well, and show what that looks like and have a physical space where we can show off our programs and people can come and be well. So we've gone through a long process. We've been working on this for about five years. This was our, our first plan here where we were looking at assisted living. We, we've seen that there is a need for assisted living in the South Bay. Not talking about senior housing or apartments or condos, talking about assisted living. We already have memory care on the campus, but this would add assisted living to the campus. And you can see where the orange on the left-hand side, we kind of wedged that in there around the existing building. What we heard back from the community is, hey, we want it to be more connected to the neighborhood. We want there to be a center of excellence that shows off the programs that we participate in, in, in the South Bay. And we want it to be intergenerational. We don't want it to be just a place where people, older people come. And so you can see the second drawing there, a little more open space. And then we got to where we are today, where we ended up reducing some of the assisted living units. So you can see we're looking from Prospect. The idea would be to build Phase One, which would be the assisted living on the left-hand side or north side of the project, kind of behind the bonds. We decided to sort of move some of the density over there behind the commercial property. We would then have Al Cove over, sort of at the top of the drawing there. I don't know if I'm going to hurt myself here. Oh, that works, okay. So we would have Al Cove, and then we would have what's called a program for all-inclusive care for the elderly. And that's a, a program where older adults can come and have all of their health needs met in one place. We don't have a place in the South Bay right now where older adults can come and have daycare services. We have a very small program with the Easter Seals, but that's something that we don't have a lot of here in the South Bay. Phase Two of the project is where we would bring in sort of the center of excellence that you can see in the middle here. We would bring back the Center for Health and Fitness for Phase One. We would have to move them off campus. We are contemplating an aquatics facility here. I know that's something that you all are looking at as well. We have done a feasibility study around aquatics, and so we've been looking at having that on place and having that onsite in Phase Two of the project. So we're going to show just a quick video. You know, we can talk about open space and we can say two acres or two football fields of open space, but really need to kind of see it in order to understand it. So hopefully this will work. Ah, all right. So we're taking a tour. Yikes. Coming from Prospect, heading east. Again, this is what the campus will look like. Again, the idea is when you're driving down Prospect and you look to your right, you say, what is that? And you say, well, that's the healthy living campus. That's Beach Cities Health District. So you can see the idea would be a place where people could come recreate, could come gather. Again, the focus is to be intergenerational and have a place where people can gather, be healthy, and show what it looks like to be healthy. You know, as you know, we participate in the Gallup survey. The well-being index scores is something that Gallup does nationally. Manhattan Beach is, is one of the highest in the nation. And so we want to show people what that looks like. So you come here, you're starting to head east. You see on your right what's called a labyrinth. This is a place where people can do walking meditations. And then as you come down, you'll see, idea would be to have demonstration gardens and gardens that we could educate, continue to educate our schools on what gardens look like within the schools. You can see there's no density now on the east side of the property. That was something that we heard a lot about from the Torrance residents. Torrance is not in the Health District, but they're right on the border there, and we want to be sympathetic to their concerns. So as you make the turn here north, you'll see, this is the building. This is where Al Cove and Pace will be the Program for All-Inclusive Care for the Elderly. You can see that the building is about six stories high. We have completed an environmental impact report on the project. We are working on, on the height. You can see as we turn the corner that it'll be a little higher than the existing office building. We're not building tall buildings to build tall buildings. We're, we're coming up in height a little bit so that we can maximize the open space. And so if the buildings need to come down, then that would be less open space available. So you can see as we come along here that it is taller than the office building. That's something that we're working on with our development partner. So for Phase One, we are doing a land lease where we will receive a land rent payment that will go to fund our programs. And so right now, the hospital building spends off about $2.5 million that goes towards our health programs. And so our hope is through Phase One that we'll be able to replace that revenue with health service programs that we need, like Al Cove, assisted living. We then have open space, which is something we need more of. And then we would be able to focus on Phase Two to meet our future health needs. That's just a quick tour. We can talk about two acres or, or two fo, two soccer fields, but I think trying to give people an idea of what that would mean in a place where people could come gather. So just in summary, I know you've got a big agenda tonight, so we'll keep it brief. But these are, again, like I just said, the revenue from this will go to fund our programs. We're very excited about Al Cove. It's been happening here for a couple of months. Sort of a good news, bad news, it's getting a lot of use, which is obviously good news, but it is a need that we have for our youth. And so we want to create a permanent home for Al Cove, and so that'll be a priority here. Blue Zones Project principles are going to be incorporated in here. We are going to make this a showcase for environmental sustainability advances. We're going to try some new things so that this can be a showcase for all three cities of what environmental sustainability looks like. Again, we can talk about some of the other specifics. Again, there will be less traffic here, right? Because we're changing the use from medical office to assisted living, among other uses. So we've done the E I R where we're showing actually less traffic on the campus. And real quick, we've done some polling and talked to people about this project. When we asked them what they think about the project, about 61% are in favor and about 21% oppose. When they learn more about it, that number goes up to about 72%. We're a health district, you know, we're a public health district. We want people to be pleased with what we're doing. There has been some concerns about the project, so that's why we've taken our time. We continue to listen and continue to try to address the issues that we hear from people. Again, this was just a question about, is there a need for assisted living? We, we've done the market study. We are showing that there is a need based upon people being able to perform average daily functions. But what we heard when we did a statistically valid survey was that almost two-thirds said, yes, there is a need for either myself or my family member for assisted living. And then years ago, we, we put together a community working group. We had Manhattan Beach residents as part of that. Jan was on that group. And we asked, hey, did we get it right with kind of what we were looking at doing with the master plan that was ultimately approved? And 93% said yes. There's always one, right? But 93% said, yes, you're on target with what you're trying to accomplish. And I think that's the last one. Any, happy to answer any questions or that you might have?
Thank you, Tom. Any council have any questions? None? I have one for you, Tom.
Sure.
Of the housing units, 217 total now. It's been reduced?
Yes. So we, we reduced that down from the 450 to 217.
Of the 217, are those, how many of those are low-income housing units?
10% are going to be below market. We're working to see if we can make those more affordable. It's a little different than your typical afforded, affordable housing, right? Because there is services that come with it. But we're trying to, at the very least, have 10% be below market for the real estate side. And then we're trying to figure out a way, hey, can we have them be truly more affordable older adult living by bringing down that, that operating cost, that, that service cost?
And any criteria for anyone to apply to rent these? In other words, District is Hermosa, Manhattan, and Redondo.
Right.
What if someone applies that doesn't live in that district?
Yeah, our plan is to have a preference for the Beach Cities residents since this is their asset. This is their property that, that they bought 60 years ago, 65 years ago. So the plan would be to have priority for Beach Cities residents.
And would that plan include someone that's been a resident for a week versus someone that's been here 10 years?
Yeah, we'll have to get in.
Probably not allowed, but I'm curious how they would judge that, a point system.
Yeah. We'll have to, you know, I've done some of that work with affordable housing, preference and lotteries. I think we'll have to work on that. I think technically, if someone's a resident.
It counts.
It would count.
Possible. Day one.
Day one.
Understood. Thank you. Councilmember Lesser?
To the extent that we're receiving comments on this project at all, Tom, some have just asked, what is the role of a public health agency to build facilities that a private entity could build just as easily? What is, what is the response to that?
Yeah, I think part of it, you know, I think there's been a lot of focus on the assisted living piece. And so we are partnering with a, a development partner that has that expertise, just like the district has partnered, as you saw, with the two front buildings with a developer that has that expertise to provide that service. We're not giving up the land. We're, we're leasing the land for $1.5 million a year that we then use that land, that revenue for our services. And so my answer to that would be, we're trying to first meet the health need. We see assisted living as well as Al Cove, memory care, all those things. Open space. We're trying to meet that health need, and for a part of it, we're partnering with someone that, that provides that service.
Is the private sector not keeping up? Is that a reason for explaining why?
Well, for assisted living, you obviously have a, a new project coming in here in Manhattan Beach. As you may know, we're also a partner in Sunrise in Hermosa Beach where years ago, the district got involved with that project as well. And so the short answer is there, there is not enough assisted living in the three beach cities to, to meet the need that we have. And so what happens, and we see with the clients that, that we serve, as you know, we serve about 400 clients where we come in with social workers and, and help them with their in-home care. And our goal is to keep people in their home for as long as possible. But when there comes a time that they can't be in their home anymore, we want them to be able to age in place or in the community. And so we think there is a need in the beach cities, and, and we think that this is a way to, to meet that need. You know, the original hospital was developed through a bond issue. We have decided to not go back out for a bond issue and see if there's a way to use the increased value of our land to meet a health need and continue to provide funding for our services.
And finally, then, what is the tentative timeframe based on what we've just saw, at least for Phase One?
Yeah, so for Phase One, we're looking at some different options. We're looking at whether or not there may be a way to move forward a little more quickly with Al Cove. That's been such a success in the last couple of months. We want to see if there's a way to move forward with that. We do need a, a conditional use permit from Redondo Beach. We do have an environmental impact report, and so we hope to go through that conditional use permit process for the remainder of this year and, and break ground probably in early '25.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Unless we can go earlier with all.
Councilmember Holworth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question, if I'm understanding, that the two buildings that are there now, are they going to be still there? So they'll stay?
Those two buildings will, will stay. The, the first one, the newer one to the north, will stay a long time. The one to the south, that lease is coming due here in 2030. And so the district and all of us will get that building back in seven years, and then that will be part of Phase Two.
I see. Okay, so any, any of the services like Quest Lab, Quest Diagnostics, the private services that rent out those spaces will still be there until the lease is up? Or are we going to put more Beach Cities Health District services in those buildings?
No, our plan is, is to keep those services there.
Okay, great.
And really try to keep that mix of medical services as well as assisted living. I think one thing I just want to emphasize is this is a unique project where you have, and it's back maybe to David's question a little bit, where you have a private assisted living facility that's not gated, that's not a place that you go visit, that's not insular. It's part of a public healthy campus, and that's something that hasn't been done. And so we think we're going to be leading the way with that.
I'll ask you again. The better I ask a question, more questions pop up. So anybody else have questions? You two, you're good? Thank you, Tom. We appreciate what you guys do for our older adults. Keep doing it, and we'll see you next time.
Okay.
And with Al Cove for our students.
Thank you.
Good. All right. Now, between announcements, anyone have one minute and length? Yes, sir. Please step up. You're first up.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, John Breitman, L and B, Class of 2023.
Welcome, John.
Thank you. Our class project for this year is creation of a nutrition facility, a pantry, for the Single Mom Project at the Rich, it's Stone Family Center in Hawthorne. So I'm here to announce the ribbon-cutting ceremony will be occurring this Saturday, May 20th, at 10 o'clock. I know Joe will be there. Hopefully, some of the rest of you can attend as well. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Good luck. Our next speaker? Don't all rush down here. It's okay.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Josh Murray, and I'm here on behalf of Manhattan Beach Library. Have you ever wanted to write and publish your own book? If so, find out how at the library on Tuesday, May 23rd, from 6:00 to 7:15 p.m. Adults are invited to learn how to write and publish a book from author and mentor Jasmine Boswell. She will share valuable information. She's leaned from over her 30 years of experience advising individuals from diverse fields on how to realize their books, business goals, and projects. Registration for this free event is available on our website, lacountylibrary.org, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Josh. How many of you know that our library, one of the second busiest libraries in the county? The only reason right there, that guy. Thank you, Josh.
Only second, geez.
Well, we'll try to be first next week. Our next speaker. Hello, J M.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm here to talk to you about the Older Adult Health Fair, which is happening this Friday at Johnson Center, and it starts at 8:30 and goes to noon. And I can't tell you the number of free tests you're going to have, but I think a lot of the people have sort of postponed some of their health tests because of the pandemic, you know, and focusing on COVID, but there are a lot of other health needs. And so we really want you to come and participate in the health fair. And we've got free to-go lunches donated by Grunion's, and so it's going to be a good time. Any questions?
We're good. It's announcements only. Thank you.
All right.
Oh, actually.
Mayor Pro Tem Franko ruined that part, but go ahead.
I'm so sorry.
He's still new, so he gets a little break.
I'm sorry, I won't ask that question again.
He's still new. It's all right.
It just occurred to me, and I wanted to ask, so are some of the tests you got to take, you got to get a reservation?
No.
Oh, so it's.
Not this year.
Do you walk in, put your name down, and then you're in line?
Yes. This is the first year they haven't required reservations, so we'll keep our fingers crossed and hope that works out.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're good to go, Joe.
I'll be there.
As hell be in charge. Our next speaker?
Hi, everybody. I'm just here to announce the Hermosa Beach Museum screening of the short documentary Grandpa Cherry Blossom. And thank you for, thank you to Councilmember Horwath for mentioning it. But I just wanted to come here and talk to you a little bit about it. It's about Francis Uematsu, who, as many of you know, owned 120 acres in Manhattan Beach, but because of the interment, had to sell it. So we're going to be showing the film, and then we're going to have a discussion with the two people in the film, Chuck Courier, who's a former Maricota teacher and also historian, and Mary Uematsu Cow, who is Francis' granddaughter. And it'll be happening Thursday and 6:00 p.m. And I should say that, right now, we're actually completely sold out, but there is a wait list. And yeah, thank you.
And your name?
I'm Maddox.
Welcome. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Great project.
Our next speaker?
Good evening. My name's Alexandria Elatrania, the Acting Communications and Civic Engagement Manager. I just wanted to let you know that we are doing a website refresh, and we're seeking input from our community via a very brief survey. It's really easy to complete. You can go to www-manhattanbeach.gov/ux. And our goal through this website refresh is to make our website more usable and user-friendly, provide the information and services to the community and the users of our website. So we need your input. So please go to the link. We're going to be completing the survey by May 25th. So our hope is to get as much community input and feedback as possible. So please go to www-manhattanbeach.gov/ux and complete the survey. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Alex. Sold mine out. Anybody else? Couple words. Any announcements? Can we go to Zoom, Martha?
No one.
No one? Wow, surprised. I have a few. Counsel, you have a few announcements, anybody? I have a couple. Martha's going to put on the screen for me. Not the city in hand. There you go, my favorite one. Coffee with the mayor, they're always different and definitely educational. May 23rd, Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf at Manhattan Village Shopping Center, and June 6th, Pete's Coffee Downtown. So come as you are. It's not a dressy event. I will not be wearing a tie at those events. So come and enjoy it, and I look forward to seeing you there. And our next one, what do we have next? It's a surprise slide. That's right. Those of you who have not signed up for this, or your neighbors wondering, what is a baby passport issued to residents, born in the city of Manhattan Beach, and notified, our city clerk leaves it to Mr., it's just the city clerk, Martha Alvarez, and they'll get all the information you need, and will present to you live at a council meeting. So collectors' items down the road, but they're still going... There's an example right there. Who was that?
Aww.
Is that a stock photo? Is that a real photo there, Martha?
It's an unknown baby.
Unknown baby, okay. Baby unknown.
Wait a minute, is that Councilmember Napolitano?
That's the Beach State District.
Oh, that's great. I appreciate that. Thank you all very much. My first mayor's photo. We're going to move to public comments. Three minutes per person. This on any item not on the council agenda. You speak on an item on the council agenda, you're going to be able to speak on that item when it comes up. So with that, our first speaker?
Actually, I'm kind of nervous today, and I'm usually not, but my heart is beating. Hello, my name is Heather, and my husband and I own Manhattan Grocery. I'm here to speak about crime and how our DA George Gascon's special directives and reclassification of crime and his policies that literally decriminalize crime are directly impacting this minority-owned, family-run business. All of these horrendous policy changes are under the umbrella of criminal justice reform. So if you support this, which some of you sitting on the dais do, Amy Horwath, then you support the pain, anguish, stress, and financial hardship that myself and thousands of small minority business owners operating in LA County have had to endure. Thanks to these insane Gascon policy changes, LA County is a paradise for criminals, not only of theft, but of even violent crimes. Effectively, this is a sanctuary city for these thugs. Yesterday, we had a shoplifting incident in which a large, muscular, intimidating man, wearing a black hoodie, threateningly informed my cashier that he was not paying for the alcohol he shoved down his pants. And there was nothing the cashier could do about it, because he was going to push him to the ground. Then he proceeded to light a cigarette in his face. And we all know, smoking and plastic straws are banned in Manhattan Beach. So I'm guessing he's not a local. So not only does this thug steal from us, but he proudly stands in line, declaring his right to steal from us, and rubs it in our face while he threatens my employee. Thankfully, he didn't pull out a gun, like what happened recently to a small clothing store in LA, where business owners were violently pistol-whipped during a robbery, and remain hospitalized to this day. We lose quite a bit due to shoplifting. But I have to say, normally, the thieves are a little more discreet than this entitled maniac. These thugs know it's a slap on the wrist, since stealing up to $950 won't even put them in jail. I can't even stress enough how upsetting and terrifying it is to operate a small business in this environment. Shout out to MBPD for coming within minutes of my call, finding this trash on the pier where he was arrested. I thank these officers for their professionalism and kindness, even while working under these awful circumstances, that could get them injured or even killed over some stolen items from a grocery store. As if this wasn't bad enough, one of the thugs' friends came back to the store, got in our cashier's face, saying, thanks to him, his buddy got arrested. It's going to cost them a lot of money, et cetera, et cetera. He wasn't happy we called the police on him. Could the world be any more upside down? Now we are all on high alert, just waiting for retaliation, watching our backs. Who knows what will happen if these three musketeers decide to come back? All of this behavior circles back to the policies of George Gascon and the people that support him. And speaking of support, Councilmember Horwath supports this crazy guy, and you can look it up in the county registrar's office website. And she believes in reimagining this police. So this does not inspire any confidence in me. You're either with us or against us, and that's it. How are you going to show support to my family operating here in Manhattan Beach in this environment? And how are you going to reach across the aisle and help us deal with operating in such a hostile paradise created by...
Thank you, Heather. Appreciate that. I appreciate our police doing what they are doing.
And I appreciate, may I comment?
Yes.
I did, when George Gascon ran. I mean, it is documented, and I support him. I've also been on record that I think he's been an utter failure, and I don't like his policies. But beyond the mischaracterization of my support of him now, I am most troubled by what happened to you and your family and your employee at your store. And I'm happy to support you and do more business with you and, you know, work with the police. So, you know, I think it doesn't do us any good to kind of say these things. I mean, you can say whatever you want, but I'm very sorry this happened to you and your family.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Our next speaker? CNN. How about Zoom? No public comment? We'll close public comment and move to Item 8's Consent Calendar, Items 3 through 11. Counsel? I see move by Councilmember Napolitano. A second with Mayor Tim Joe Franklin. Roll call, please.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right. Thank you all. Item I, no items removed in consent calendar. First, Item J, public hearing, Item Number 12, conduct public hearing in consideration of resolution adopting new wastewater rates and charge effective November 1st, 2023, to November 2000... I'm sorry, November 1st, 2027, and all protest to the proposed wastewater rates, led by Public Works Director Lee. Floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, Honorable Member, our mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Eric Lee, your Public Works Director. Tonight's public hearing presentation will be given by Senior Management Analyst Nicole Petrov.
All right, welcome to call.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight, we're here conducting the public hearing to consider new wastewater rate fees for Manhattan Beach wastewater services. Give me one second. It's not... It works really well. Thank you. If these rates are adopted this evening, they will be effective for the next five years, starting November 1st, 2023, running through November 1st, 2027. Basics regarding these fees. So currently, customer bills fund the operations and capital infrastructure associated with all wastewater projects in the items listed here. So right now, we have 82 miles of gravity sanitary sewer pipelines, over 5,000 feet of force mains, 2,000 manholes, and eight lift stations, all operating with six and a half full-time employees. We have one engineer that's assigned to our wastewater projects. Next slide, please. This is a timeline. So typically, municipalities determine long-term revenue needs to support their wastewater programs by performing these rate studies. These rate studies are to be performed by a certified consultant. As a timeline to how we got here today, in 2010, our wastewater master plan identified that the city has $42 million in improvements that were needed. The last actual wastewater rate increase was in 2014. Fast forward to 2023, Black and Beach conducted a rate analysis, and on March 21st of this year, council initiated the Prop We all know that prices, costs for everything, including food, materials have gone up significantly since 2014. If you look at compounded inflation since 2014, it's gone up 25.4%. The cost for our maintenance and our projects have increased. And if you were to look at this slide, it kind of has a cumulative increases from 2009 to 2022. So it shows here, while all items have kind of gone all over the place with regards to their increase cumulatively since 2009, water rates and sewer rates have gone up uniformly, all the way up till 2022. We're in a need where we have identified many, many infrastructure needs that we need, and these rates would fund those infrastructure needs. Next slide, please. All Prop 218 notices came with this excerpt, which shows the proposed rate increases for the next five years. It includes the current rate right now, and they are all based on different meter sizes. So in example here, you'll see, you know, if you have a 3/4-inch meter, 1280 would be your fixed charge, and then your variable uses charge is based on water usage. So for the first increase, it's $1.46. Next slide, please. This slide here shows the bill impacts that your average, single-family household would see. So if you look here, we look at about 20, 100 cubic feet is typically the average single-family residential. Your bimonthly bill would be $36.52, and your proposed bimonthly bill would be $42, around $42. So the difference for that is about, it's $5.49 on their monthly bill, which equates to about $2.75 a month. If these rates are accepted or initiated today, November 1st, 2023 would be the effective date of these new rates. They will not be reflective in bills until January 1st, 2024. Next slide, Here is kind of a snapshot of our website. So on our website, we created a customer wastewater bill calculator. In this calculator, you're able to type in your scenario, the meter size, typical usage is about 20, but you can look at your water bill and see what you typically use. And you can plug in those numbers and see what your rate will be. Next slide, please. The Prop 218 process. So this process was passed by California voters in 1986. This limits governments, so they can't just increase taxes and fees. They have to go through this process. It allows property owners and rate payers to protest rate increases. This is limited to one protest per parcel. This process requires that the city mails these notices to property owners and rate payers. As a courtesy, the city also mailed these to tenants, just to make sure that everybody knew that this process was taking place. There is a 45-day protest period that is required. The city did a 49-day protest period to give people ample time to make this decision. And then this is the public hearing that we're at to hold after this protest period. Next slide, please. This is just a timeline of the events that got us to this point. So on March 21st, council initiated the process, and we set the public hearing date for today. March 28th is when the Prop 218 notices were mailed to property owners, rate payers, and then also to tenants and occupants. We held a community meeting on April 19th. It was in person on Zoom. A live recording of it was posted on the website soon thereafter. Today is the public hearing, where we'll determine if there is a protest count and if we can move forward with the rates. If we can, and we do not have a protest count of over 50% plus one, or of 50% plus one, new rates will go into effect November 1st, 2023. And then new wastewater rates will be reflective on customer bills January 1st, 2024. Next slide, please. So in order to get a majority protest count, this is the, these are the numbers that we would need to see. So after this public hearing, the city clerk's office is going to announce the final protest count, and we'll know whether or not we can move forward. So if more than 6,600 protests are received, that would declare a majority protest, in which case, the city council cannot approve the rate increase. However, city council can initiate that prop, the Prop 218 process again, at any point. If less than 6,600 protests are received, the city council may approve the new rate increase. And as I mentioned before, these new rates will take in effect November 1st, reflective in bills 2024. Approval of these rates, just so everybody knows, is good for five years, at which time another Prop 218 process would be required to increase the rates. Next slide, please. And so our next step will be for the city clerk, once we've concluded the public hearing, to receive, to give us the final protest count received at the end of the public hearing. If a majority protest is reached, council may adopt the resolution approving the new rates.
Is not reached.
And then our recommendation is adopting of Resolution Number 23, and it's 0051, adopting the annual proposed rate increase effective November 1st, 2023, through November 1st, 2027. That concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Well done, Nicole.
Thank you.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing no one's actually pushed the button to speak. I assume none. Open up for public comment. Thank you, Nicole. Anyone care to speak on this item? Seeing none. Let's go to Zoom. All right, no one on Zoom. Counsel, direction, motion?
Don't we have to hear from...
Mayor, go ahead and close the public hearing.
Close public hearing.
And then go a part from the city clerk.
We see 47.
There you go.
47.
47.
Correct.
Well below 6,600.
I'm not good at math, but...
Yes.
I think that's right.
Just to make sure, being how I understood that. Counsel, knowing that, the city clerk just confirmed the number. I have a motion by Councilmember Horwath?
Yes, to adopt Resolution Number 23-0051.
Thank you for that. Is there a second? A second by Councilmember Lesser, and a comment by Councilmember Lesser.
Mr. Mayor, no one likes to pay more for government services. But conversely, nobody wants to have a failure of our infrastructure, particularly our wastewater infrastructure. I think our council, for past decades, of past councils, have invested in our infrastructure precisely so there would not be a failure. I mean, what was the old adage? We want to be able to not have fear to flush. I think it's been a responsible undertaking by councils before us to invest in our infrastructure to ensure that this core, core function of our city is operational and invested in to ensure it remains so. So that is why I've seconded the motion.
Well said. Other comments? Agree. That roll call, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Amy?
A motion?
I moved approval of resolution, or adopting Resolution Number 23-0051.
And I seconded.
Thank you.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you all. Appreciate that. Our next item up? General business. Okay, number 13, consideration of increase to stormwater assessments, Finance Director Sherillian.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Montgomery, members of the City Council, Steve Sherillian, Finance Director. I'm going to turn this presentation over to Julie Bonderchuk, our financial controller. Thank you.
All right.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Montgomery and members of the City Council.
Good evening.
My name is Julie Bonderchuk, financial controller. It is my pleasure today to present the report for consideration of a stormwater assessment increase, which is part of the City Council work plan. We are here today to discuss the status of the city's stormwater fund and whether to proceed with the next steps for a potential fee increase. Oh, sorry. My apologies. So tonight, we will talk about the current status of the stormwater fund, where fees have not changed since 1996, and its impact on the general fund and reserves. We will also briefly go over the last analysis conducted in 2018, and the two ballot options available if the city decides to proceed with a stormwater fee increase. The objective tonight is to decide on whether to proceed with obtaining an updated engineer's report and conduct a survey to poll voter sentiment. The cost for both of these is $46,000. The city's financial policy designates a financial policy reserve of 20% of annual operating expenditures. The general fund forecast presented at the proposed budget meeting projects that the city will not meet the financial policy reserves by fiscal year 2027. The red amounts in fiscal year 2027 and fiscal year 2028 illustrates the financial policy reserves not being met. Additionally, the forecast projects... My apologies.
It's all right.
Sensitive clicker.
Much better.
Okay, thank you. Additionally, the forecast projects dipping into economic uncertainty reserves by fiscal year 2026, with the reserves fully unfunded by fiscal year 2027. Unreserved general fund balance is also projected to be fully depleted by fiscal year 2026. Unreserved general fund balance is also projected to be fully depleted by fiscal year 2026. In the last six years listed on the slide, it is projected that the general fund will provide the stormwater fund with approximately $11.4 million of subsidies. With this current method, funding stormwater operations with general fund subsidies is Some of the impacts of the general fund in the last couple of years include inflation, funding capital projects, and subsidies. Inflation is outpacing revenue growth and decreases the purchasing power of the city's dollars. Additionally, some public capital project bids are coming in as high as 2.5, 2.5 times more than budgeted. Due to the resources required when undertaking major projects, there is insufficient funding for critical infrastructure needs. Mandated projects also put a strain on funding. Although there are potential offsets from grants for some of these mandated projects, ongoing maintenance of infrastructure is not covered by grants. And lastly, ongoing support of the stormwater fund is estimated to result in about $11.4 million of outgoing transfers from the general fund over the next six years. The main purpose of the stormwater fund is to fund systems to divert stormwater off the streets and prevent flood, flooding. With rainfall, trash is also carried into the storm drains along with the stormwater. Therefore, additional function of the stormwater fund is to prevent trash and debris from reaching surface waters like the ocean. The, the city currently, currently maintains seven full capture systems to capture runoff debris carried into the storm drains. Additionally, mandates also limit the levels of bacteria and metals in runoff waters. Ideally, enterprise funds like the stormwater fund should be self-supporting, where incoming revenues cover outgoing costs. However, the stormwater fund has been running a deficit year over year. Any deficits in the stormwater fund is subsidized by the general fund. Currently, single-family residential pays a fixed rate of about $19 annually, resulting about $350,000 of annual revenue, which is represented by the flat blue line on the chart. Expenditures are projected to fall between 1.6 and $3 million over the next six years. The bulk of the expenditures fund storm drain repairs and controlling runoff. The difference between the two lines is the amount of general fund subsidies required to support the stormwater fund, which amounts to approximately $11.4 million over the next six years. Stormwater fees of $19 for single-family residential has not changed since the program's inception in 1996, about 27 years ago. The last analysis conducted in 2019 recommended moving away from the fixed rate to calculating rates based on impervious square footage. Impervious square footage is the amount of land on a property that cannot absorb water. If water can be absorbed through dirt or grass, then there is no need for stormwater services. However, land covered by cement or material that does not allow rain to be absorbed, absorb creates runoff. And does, and that does require more stormwater services. The proposed rate structure would determine the rate based on the amount of impervious square footage on a property. Based on the 2019 analysis, the average single-family residential will pay about $70 annually, an increase of $50 a year. A statistically valid survey conducted at the time resulted in approximately 60% residential support for this measure. However, this analysis is now outdated, so upon city council approval, staff will proceed with obtaining an updated report of new proposed rates and conduct a new survey to poll public This chart depicts the proposed rates from the 2019 analysis. Single-family residences had an average fee of $70, an increase of $50. About 56% of the population would have had an average rate of $44 to $71. About 17% of, would have an average fee of $97. Condos and multifamily residential, which accounts for 19% of the parcels, would have an average fee of $36 to $64. Higher rates for the remaining 8% of parcels are due to larger lot sizes or having more impervious for footage on the property. A new engineer's report is required to obtain updated rates, rates based on current operation and infrastructure needs. In order to increase the stormwater assessment, the city must go through a ballot process. Stormwater has two options. The first option is to place the measure in the November 2024 election. This option requires two-thirds voter approval of the locally casted ballots. The other ballot option is a Prop 218 process. It involves a 45-day protest period, and then a 45-day ballot process where property owners can vote on the measure. A Prop 218 process requires majority approval of property owners. Our last meeting held April 20th, 2023, finance subcommittee recommended proceeding with a Prop 218 process. Should city council decide to pursue a proposition 218 process, this chart illustrates the proposed timeline. However, city council does not have to decide today which ballot option to pursue. If directed to proceed today, staff will work on obtaining an updated engineer's report and conducting a survey in the next two to three months. On the August 15th meeting, city council can review the results of the engineer's report and survey and decide how to proceed. At that time, we will also go into more detail on the two ballot options. So there is a potential obstacle to the city's efforts to enhance revenue. A measure titled the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act is slated for the upcoming November 2024 election. If approved, all tax increases, including fees, would require two-thirds voter approval. In addition to making it more difficult for localities to raise revenue to fund local services and infrastructure, it is also retroactive to January 1st, 2022. So any increases passed after this date may have to be reversed. If staff receives approval to proceed forward with obtaining an updated engineer's report and conducting a survey, we anticipate returning to the August 15th city council meeting to present the results, along with a detailed, a detailed report on the stormwater program. At that time, city council can decide on whether to proceed with a ballot measure. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Julie. Stand by. Councilor Politano.
Thank you, your honor. Questions? We raised this a little bit before, but how are we going to determine impervious services? I mean, and, and what the category is, because is DG, the composed grant, is that considered impervious, rocks, grasscrete? What part of that's going to be counted? Some of the pavers now have grooves between them to allow for pass-through. And then, I mean, we're not going in property by property. Are we doing this by permits? Are we doing it by Google Earth? How are we going to determine this?
So the last study that was conducted in 2019 went by the data in LA County. And we are also using the LA Downey County data for the measure W.
What does that mean, LA County data? What data?
The assessment data in the LA County. They have what is built out for impervious square footage. So.
In terms of, for instance, walkways and not just roofs, but, and, and square footage of houses, but surfaces, improved surfaces that would include? I don't know what.
Yeah, that is my understanding. We can get clarification on that. But we are, they're already using impervious square footage to calculate the measure W. So it's, it's already out there.
You're just adopting the measure W.
For measure W, we would use the same data as that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor for Tim Franklin.
Yes, hi, thank you. Can you just give, for my purposes of clarification, and, and maybe for our residents, sort of a drone eye view of the equipment here? It's a lot of money. It's millions of dollars, but I don't think a lot of people have seen the pumps, the retaining stations, things like that. I heard that there's seven of them around town. Can you just sort of give us an idea of the breadth of this equipment?
Yes, Public Direct, Public Works Director Lee is the expert on that.
I understand the question, right? What, what kind of infrastructure and equipment do we operate in the stormwater system? Is that?
Yeah.
Is that correct? So we have a number of lift stations, and lift stations essentially are pumps that pump the stormwater over higher ground. And then we have, we maintain miles and miles of pipes. And then we also connect to county pipes as well. And then, you know, a lot of our expenses really relate to the ongoing maintenance of that infrastructure, whether it be just make sure it's clean, or general repairs associated with motors and generators and whatnot. And then we have tremendous capital needs to address regional mandates. And there are projects that, that are in the CIP that the council is going to discuss again tonight, in the tens of millions of dollars of, of obligations that we have to make sure that the stormwater system works correctly. So fortunately, we have grants for many of those projects, and we continue to not only seek grants, but receive favorable outcomes from granting agencies. But the, the cost associated with running this infrastructure is real, and grants will never fund all of it. And as was mentioned previously, generally, the operation and maintenance of this infrastructure, granting agencies aren't real interested in that.
Okay. All right. I, I was going to ask a question about what's, what, what is considered permeable. So for example, if somebody does some landscaping on previous, previously that was grass, they put down bricks and cement and things like that. Do, I guess, these, these homeowners would have to have permits? And how does that get added on to the? First of all, is that considered non, non-permeable? Okay? And then how does that get translated over to their ultimate, you know, fee in terms of square footage for their property?
I'll let Controller Bonderchuk address that.
Hello. So we do have a consultant that we consult with that does these calculations every year. So they do take the LA County data, if it's updated, by a permit. Of course, we won't be able to take into account any data that, that was not permitted.
Okay, does the permit say how many square feet there is of covering? Or do they have to actually go into the plans and?
I, I believe so. And the permit data, I can double-check that. But usually on permits, you put the square footage of what you're modifying.
Okay, and do we have a process for a resident to question that, or, you know, contest the square footage value that is determined?
We currently do not. We're still in the infancy stages of this process. That's something we can potentially look into, but usually we do take the LA County data. We do have an option in the fee to take, you know, community developments data, but since measure W is already using the LA County data, it just seems more consistent to use the same data.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Anything else?
Just give me a second here. So the 218 process, so we just saw that earlier, you know, with, with, with the wastewater. So the 218 process, so needs a two-thirds majority to win?
It, it needs a majority approval from property owners.
A majority approval. Okay, so the, the ballot that goes out to homeowners, so then we count the yes votes on that versus the no? Well, I mean, we count both, but.
Yes, you count both, and whatever is higher wins. So if we have a majority vote, a majority of yeses, then yes, that would pass.
Okay, but where does the 50% come in?
Good evening, Mayor Protem. It would be a simple majority on the mail-in ballot. So it would be a simple.
Oh, okay. So it's plus one. Fifty percent plus one. Of the, of the ballots that come in?
Of the ballots that come in.
Okay.
If you put it on for, say, a general election, it would be a two-thirds.
Okay, yes.
But, but again, just to clarify a little bit, for tonight, we're just asking as a part of, this is a process. So we went to the finance subcommittee first. Tonight, we're here to ask you to, you know, give us the opportunity to go out and get a survey, as well as do an engineer's report, and come back to you with a, with a lot of information. And just also one other thing to clarify, when they did measure W, they did a complete aerial survey in addition to the county. It was a full aerial survey. Thank you.
Thank you. No more questions.
No questions. Counselor Lesser.
Director Lee. Mayor for Tim Franklin asked. My, my phone's off. Mayor Franklin asked a bit about the infrastructure that is being incorporated by the city. I think it might be helpful just to confirm what some of the federal and county obligations are that have made this investment mandated and required. It isn't just a straight-line inflationary curve that we're dealing with in terms of rising prices. We've been obligated, as I understand it, to incorporate major infrastructure because we are at the end of the line and we discharge into the ocean. Can you explain that as an overview? And I recognize there'll be more information that is presented when staff comes back with the report.
Happy to. So, you know, really, this originates with the federal government under the Clean Water Act. It was passed many years ago. Locally, that's administered by, or statewide, it's, it's by the state water board. And regionally, in Los Angeles County, we have the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Board. And so they're our regulatory agency, along with all the other communities in Los Angeles County. And really, the, the aim of this is to make sure that the surface waters of America are not polluted. And so as you mentioned, you know, we are at the front door to the beach, and, and 85% of all of the stormwater in the city goes directly into the San Monica Bay very quickly. The other 15% discharges into the Dominguez Channel, which takes a longer route, but ultimately reaches the ocean as well. And so, yeah, I think all of us here and members of the community will remember, years and years ago, when there was always alerts in, in the San Monica Bay that don't go in the water today. And fortunately, we don't have those nearly as frequent. And a lot of that is due to these, these regulations that have been, you know, imposed on local agencies for good reason. And so as our part here in Manhattan Beach, we are part of the Beach Cities Enhanced Watershed Management Plan, or E-WIMP. And so we've partnered with the cities of Hermosa Beach, Redondo Beach, and Torrance, and LA County Flood Control to meet our regional obligations. And so we recognize that we're not in this alone, and that, and, and not one city or, or town can make a difference. It takes everyone to do this. And so we've realized there's economies of scale and efficiencies that we can gain, and hopefully better benefits for the region with more regional projects and regional approach rather than every city doing their own thing. And so, you know, with that, E-WIMP, we've got, yeah, I think for the entire region, with all those agencies that I mentioned, I, I would say the well over $100 million worth of projects that we're all trying to, to complete in Manhattan Beach. We've got, I think, the last estimate that I've seen in a staff report is upwards of 60-some million dollars worth of obligations. And we are well on our way to, to accomplish that. So our, our solutions, big picture, are to, and our cornerstone project, which I mentioned before, is our 28th Street Infiltration Walls Project. And that will take the parking lot of Bruce's Beach, and we're going to have a series of dry wells in there, and we're going to reroute some of the storm drain lines to discharge into those underground wells. And so that water goes into the soil rather than into the bay. And so we are well on our way to do that. We've got grant funds to complete all that, and those grants total about $30 million. And that's going to take care of a lot of our needs. We've got a partnership with Torrance to do some green streets projects on the perimeter of our city, and that's going to make sure that we've got more impervious surfaces, that when the rains do come, that water can percolate into the ground. And then we have significant obligations to deal with runoff into the Dominguez Channel. So the region's major project that's currently being worked on right now is at a laundry park. We are on record as supporting that. We don't have any direct contributions yet that we need to make, but there are other projects that we have to do to make sure that, because we're upstream of that portion of the channel, that we're taking care of our business. And the, the cost to address that is likely to be in the millions of dollars. We've got some years before we are obligated to have these, that, that project specifically completed, and so we're in the beginning stages of figuring out how to do that. But those are all real regulatory mandated projects that we're doing. These are projects that we, we really have excellent consultants that know this aspect of the business, that have helped us design the projects. And that's just all on the regulatory side. And then we've got locally, quite frankly, we have flooding issues at times. And so we're spending, you know, tens of millions of dollars to deal with regulatory issues. We're also hoping to spend millions of dollars in, in the coming years to deal with local flooding issues, to make sure that when heavy rains come, or flash flood, flash rains come, that we don't have public safety issues. we don't have public safety issues, and we don't have life and property issues.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Hoeworth.
Yeah. Director Lee, I think when you were talking about the green streets projects in conjunctura towards, did you mean permeable instead of impervious?
Permeable.
Because...
Not impervious.
Right. Right. Thank you. And I believe to Mayor Protem Franklin's questioning about, you know, what if some resident replaces their grass with brick, et cetera? There are, we do have codes, and this may be for Director Muzakarian, but that say you have to have 20 or 30% like of your project still has to be permeable, right? There has to be space to runoff. You can't just have completely impervious pavement, I believe. Is that just a yes or no? Is... Because, yeah.
Residential properties do have a 30% landscaping requirement?
30% landscaping.
Correct.
So if you're like redoing your patio or something, you can't just, it can't be all brick or cement.
That is correct.
And if you did it past the Measure W analysis, then that's where you will be comparing that data with new permits to see if the amount is the same, I believe. So, just a clarification.
Thank you for that. Anybody else have questions? Seeing none. Open up public comment. Anyone here want to talk about increase in stormwater assessments? The theme for tonight so far. Seeing none. We go to Zoom, please, Martha. Seeing none. There will close public comment. Counsel? You want to start us off? Okay. I'll start us off. I'll even go first. The fact that anyone would come and tell you that you're going to spend $11.4 million on something that hasn't been raised in fees since 1996 should scare everyone in the room, everybody else at home watching this, that they're blowing money at a general fund. If you look at the numbers, you're going to run dry and eat into your reserves in six years. That should get everyone concerned. So I motion to Councilmember Lesser's earlier comment. This is a need, not a want. This is a need to catch us back up to scale. We cannot rely on grants, as Director Lee said. We have no way to catch up by relying on grants, assuming you win them all, which we never do. You're never going to catch up. So this is the right thing to do at the right time. That's why I put a motion in there. Councilmember Napolitano.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I would go further to say it's a must. It's unsustainable. It will eat into other services, police, fire, parks and recreation, all those things that we hold dear and we want more of. We will have less if we do not adjust this picture and right the ship, because, you know, our budget discussions have shown that, the lines show that right there. And we really need to make the case to folks. It's on, people still have to vote for it. And we have to make the case out there for them and educate folks as to why this is necessary. As Councilmember Lesser said earlier, nobody wants to pay more for these types of services, but this is part of the invisible infrastructure that we all rely on. And, you know, poll after poll that we've taken, survey after survey...
Thank you.
That we survey our own residents statistically valid, they show that clean ocean is at the top of what they look for when living here in Manhattan Beach. And this will help ensure that. It will help ensure that we address our flooding issues around town. And with climate change, it's needed now more than ever. And it's just unsustainable in the model that we have. And so, you know, it's still going to be an election, still, we still need to make the case, and we're going to have to do that and do it right. Thank you, Your Honor.
Well said. Definitely a must, not a need. Let's see. Councilmember Hoeworth, you're next.
Very quickly, as I seconded your motion, and Councilmember Napolitano brought up what I was going to mention, which, you know, in addition to supporting everything people have said, poll after poll says, you know, our people value clean ocean water. I mean, that's really clear. We are a coastal community. So I just want to amplify those comments and add my support.
Well done. Councilmember Lesser.
My colleagues have said mostly everything I want to say, and very eloquently. The comment I would make is, I think we need to make sure our residents understand that these are not just feel-good measures. It's not just because we want a clean ocean. It's because we have been mandated to take these steps to upgrade our infrastructure, and these are actual costs and projected continuing costs. And right now, we are only getting revenue to pay for it based on the rates that were set in stone in 1996. We have to, as the mayor said, undertake the difficult task of raising sufficient revenues to fulfill our mandates. One can be frustrated with the fact that these are, in a sense, unfunded mandates, except for some of the grants that the Public Works Director indicated. But we have far more obligations than we're able to satisfy with those grants, and I will be supporting the motion because of that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Member Tim Franklin.
Yes, thank you. So I want to echo everything that's been said here, but, and we all know it, that it's really the jewel of Manhattan Beach is our ocean. Even though we're two miles long of the ocean, we have an obligation to deliver clean water, or as clean as possible, back into the ocean. The, I asked the question about infrastructure because that's capturing runoff, and we even make a further commitment before that in that we sweep the streets every week. I believe the state only requires that you do it once a month, but we've made the commitment to spend the money to do that four times a month, so that the amount of material that goes into the stormwater drains is reduced to begin with. So that's our obligation. We enjoy it. Many of us go in that water, and so we want to make sure it can be as clean as possible, and certainly for the visitors that are coming. You know, you can hear down the sidewalk, you hear this "tum-tum-tum-tum-tum," and it's tourists, visitors, who are visiting our beach because they hear so much about it. And they're, they've got a five-hour layover or three-hour layover at LAX, and they're coming here, and they're hauling their luggage with them down our sidewalks to go see that beach, to go on the pier. So we owe it to them as well. So, thank you.
Well done. Not taking our sand with them. Thank you for that. All right. We have a motion, and a second, a motion by myself, and a second by Councilmember Hoeworth. Roll call, please.
Motion passes 5-0.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you. We're going to take a break. After this next one, next item, we're going to take, no, no, come on. After this next item, we're going to take a break for five minutes.
So moved.
Item 14, consideration of resolution appointing Patrick Griffin as interim Information Technology Director and approval of an employment agreement with Patrick Given. Griffin, acting HR Director, Stephanie Swafford, you're on the, it's up to you.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Council. You pretty much announced it. I'm here to ask for your consideration to adopt the resolution to appoint Patrick Griffin for the interim IT Director position. As you're aware, IT Director Hackelman is leaving us at the end of the month, June 2nd, and we'd like to bring back in Patrick Griffin for this position. He was previously interim director before, before Terry Hackelman came on board. So he's very experienced with our city. He knows staff. He would be able to come right in. It would be a seamless transition.
Well said. Thank you very much. Counsel, questions? Seeing none. Thank you. Public comment? No one? No one on Zoom either?
No.
All right.
Oh, I'm not sure if I need to announce the salary, but I'll go ahead and announce that real quick.
Please, your next question. Yes, thank you.
Yeah. So as part of the interim assignment, there is an employment agreement, and the salary that we would be bringing in Mr. Griffin at, he would be a retired annuitant, would be $108.33 per hour. There are no benefits tied to this position because he is a retired annuitant, and it's capped at 960 hours per fiscal year.
Because of that, I see a question now. Councilmember Lesser.
I just wanted to ensure because Mr. Griffin is retired, that there are enough hours available for him to oversee some of these critical projects that we're undertaking.
Yes. Yeah. And...
Sure, you made that assessment, but obviously, I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
And we are starting recruitment for Terry's replacement immediately.
Great.
Yeah. You should see that open up probably by Thursday.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Counsel?
It's a need.
I have a first by Councilmember Napolitano, and a second by Councilmember Hoeworth, and we'll do a roll call, please.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephanie. Well done. Counsel, we'll take a five-minute break. We're going to adjourn for five minutes and come right back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.[1201.33]
Can we go live?
We're live, Mrs.
All righty, buddy. We convene for item one five. Presentation to proposed five-year capital improvement program fiscal year 2324 through 2728 and fiscal year 2024 proposed operating budget. Lab Health Works Director Lee and Finance Director Sherrillian, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening again. Tonight, we're looking forward to continue our conversation about the five-year CIP with the council. And so our hope is that you've got some questions for us and definitely want to answer those. And I'm going to let City Engineer Katie Doherty take it from here.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm back. We will, my plan was just to start up again where I left off at the budget study session on the ninth. So let me just flip forward to that slide.
Your Honor, if I may.
Sure. Counselor Polatano.
We've covered this. Do we need to go through everything again? I don't, I'm just making sure that no one else had any question on the council level, public comments, they have the outside, we'll circle back when the question went out, then we go on from there. If you have no questions, don't push the button.
That's really what tonight is about, is hopefully tonight council will give us direction on two things, one, whether you want to have a study session next Tuesday if there are further unanswered questions. But most importantly, we'd like to wrap up as soon as we can so we can come back on June 6th to adopt both CIP and budget at that meeting. So the earlier you give us the direction, the better off we are in terms of preparing for that. So if you have no comments tonight, fine, we'll go ahead and go back and prepare things. But if you need clarification or anything else, we're happy to do that this evening.
Understood. So I ask my colleagues, any questions, push the button now. If not, we've got a public comment and circle back.
I mean, how long is the presentation?
I think, I think it's second, phase two of your first original, or you have more added?
Yes, I mean, I have this entire, the attachment for this work plan document on the slides. So it's, I can go through every single of the 84 projects or not.
It sounded like Councilmember Polatano wants to.
As much as we share your enthusiasm and love your passion, my question is, we've all been handled this.
Yes.
There's nothing new to the council to look and review at. Nothing has changed since your document dated May 8th, 2023.
Correct. That's the latest information.
So seeing that, yes, Counselor Howard, you have a question?
Well, I have a comment.
Oh, comment. Counselor Howard.
Thank you, sir. I mean, it's not just her enthusiasm and passion. I want to say it's your expertise, which was on display last time. Your thorough knowledge of all of this is truly impressive, and I'm grateful that you have presented as well as you have.
So you're just questioning here, we're going to come back for comments, it's just questions.
I told you it was a comment, I just wanted to get up there.
Counselor.
I warned you.
Just out of respect, I wanted to ask if there's specific issues that you looked into following some of the council member questions and comments that you wanted to report back to us tonight?
I covered those last, last time.
You did too.
The specific questions that were, that came up, I covered those on the ninth. So, so really, I'm just here for new questions.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, stand by, don't go anywhere. Public comment, anyone here want to talk about the plans, the budget, stormwater, anything? All right, how about on Zoom, Martha? All right, well, close public comment. And seeing the question, just a confirmation of, yes, detail, thank you for that, the priority. Those who asked the question to me, and I apologize, I had to ask Catherine again, the word closeout on the chart, that means fiscal year 2024 completion, closeout means they expect the project to be completed by the end of fiscal year 2024. That's what closeout means. So just clarification on the item. Past that point, I think everything I want to see is on there from EV chargers to the camera installation, everything else is on there. The only thing I'd circle, and maybe Dr. Lee wants to address this or not, we've had so many comments and questions about the feasibility of an aquatic center, and that's still moving around from all different locations. The city manager knows that can bounce from BCHD, it could bounce to somewhere on Parkview, it could bounce somewhere else. But if the feasibility studies possible options, then we're good, and we'll see what happens. You okay with that?
Fine with it, yes.
Great. So that said, I'll look for a motion and a second on item one five. I see a motion, my counsel member Lesser.
I think, I think Director Sherrillian is going to give a, a short presentation on the operating budget, I'm not sure.
You'd like to add that to this presentation?
They're, they're combined as a single item on the agenda.
They're combined, but Finance Director Sherrillian doesn't have anything additional to add at this point.
Okay, so let me rephrase my question to my colleagues. Thank you both for your, for your move and second. Any of my colleagues have a question on the CIP and/or the operating budget?
No questions.
City Attorney Quinn, do I have to open this back up, City Attorney Barrow, do I have to open this back up for the second part of the?
It's not legally required. You gave an opportunity for the public to speak on both items.
Okay.
I mean, you can ask if you want.
All right, let me re, let me restate my question. Anyone in the public have a comment on either of the budgets, CIP or operating budget tonight?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, there was one issue that was outstanding on the budget, and that was the parking citation.
Ah, yes.
Issue if council wanted us to proceed with that.
All right. Good, Sherrillian, you want to address that so we all, everybody at home can understand what we're talking about?
Sure. So there, the one additional item is proposed revenue enhancement to increase parking citations from $53 to $55, which remained unchanged since 2015. The average of the top 10 cities were surveyed were closer to $58. So even with the proposed increase of Manhattan Beach would be below that average. This item was discussed at the April 20th Finance Subcommittee meeting, and the discussion was to bring it forth to City Council during the budget presentation. So the increase would generate about $166,000 annually for the general fund and about $800,000 for the five-year forecast in year 2728, and we all saw where that's headed. So please note, $15 of each citation goes to the current courthouse, we pay them about $900,000 annually. Any questions, we're happy to answer.
Now we have questions. Counselor Merhworth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I wanted.
Questions or comments?
Well, it's not that we.
You could do either.
This is questions, because I have to go back and have public comment again because he came and spoke.
Oh, he came and spoke, okay. I, I had a question about the motion, so I can wait for public comments and ask a question.
Got it. Counselor Polatano.
I'll wait for public comment. Those were, those were coming.
Comments as well, that's why I was asking him, sir.
All right, so I'll knock these out, we're going to come back.
Remember the order.
There we go. So I'll take public comment now. Anyone on either of these items of item number 15? The CIP or operating budget, any questions? Seeing none. On Zoom? None there either, either item, so close public comment. Colleagues, Counselor Polatano.
Hello, I'm first to speak. Thank you, yeah, and I'm not trying to shortcut this by any means. This is our most important document, one of the most important decisions we make on a yearly basis regarding budget and CIP. And I want to assure everyone that this has been thoroughly vetted by council through a couple meetings now. Unfortunately, you know, we don't have an overwhelming participation rate from the public on this, but we have heard from a number of individuals. And I think it's also things that we keep in mind throughout the year from the things we hear as priorities and everything else. This isn't just, you know, a moment in time as much as it is accumulation of our experience and our decisions and funding for the, what we've heard this last year and what we want to improve upon or change or whatever for the upcoming year. With that, though, the, I'll, I'll refer to, speak specifically to the increase in the, the parking citations. I think it's unnecessary at this time. I think that we have some, some needs, but, you know, CIP with some of the other increases that we're doing, I don't think another $100,000 from that is paramount. I, I don't want to hit everybody with a lot of different things at once. I think it's better PR for us to just go with the musts rather than the, the wants. And I don't see the, the parking citation increases as a need or a must at this point.
Understood, thank you. Counselor Merhworth.
Thank you, Mr., excuse me.
I'm sorry, one more comment about, is that with that, you know, again, in speaking about performative things, I really, I don't see that we need another study session on this, given the level of participation we've had so far. That's my only additional.
Appreciate that, thank you. Counselor Merhworth.
So that was going to be my question and comment right now. One of the things we were faced with on the agenda is we could, you know, have another study session next Tuesday. And I think if we had all come here with additional questions and maybe additions or subtractions to the budget, you know, then it would be appropriate to come back again next week. But I, I would say, again, based on participation and also our understanding, I'm not sure we do need that. So, you know, let us, let's do make that decision, though. You know, that is something we have to decide tonight. I'm fine with what Councilmember Napolitano proposed about not raising the parking tickets right now, we can do that at any time. And we did say that we are going to do a study, right, for parks and rec and different fees, right, we're going to do a rate study. So we, you know, we're going to be approaching different aspects of how we provide service, and that will be something that we look at. I appreciate what Councilmember Napolitano said, that it may look like, okay, we're just, okay, but we've asked a lot of questions, a lot of us do have a lot of experience with this, staff always presents a conservative budget. What we're, what we're voting on tonight, though, is not to accept the budget, it's, it's going to come back one more time on June 6th for final approval, so let's also be clear on that. So I just wanted to get some clarity and still need to know if we're coming back next Tuesday from the rest of my colleagues.
Understood, well, I promise we'll address that. Counselor Merhworth.
I agree with everything my two colleagues have said. I think members of the public that might be watching this should understand that we're not seeking to rush this through. It has really been remarkable to me over the years that I've had the privilege of serving on council when we have one of the largest items, the greatest responsibility of council, which is approving the budget and planning our capital improvement project, that very few, if any, show up. We made ourselves available, I think I, and I think all of my colleagues have really studied this budget and really have appreciated the professionalism and thoroughness of city staff in preparing this budget to date. That is why I've made a motion to approve it. I agree with my two colleagues' comments about citations at this time, particularly at a point where we are raising, proposing to raise fees. I think we want to be sensitive to those that feel that the city is going after every last nickel, when in fact, there is certainly justification for it, I would rather defer it, I don't think it's appropriate at this time. And I also agree with the proposal that we not have a study session next week and wait for this budget to come back on the 6th unless any of my colleagues have any issues, now would be the time to raise them so city staff has an opportunity to address them. But I've made a motion to move forward, and the exact, specific is to, let's see, receive the report, provide direction, I guess that would be then the direction.
Great. Thank you for that. Mayor Tim Franklin?
Yes, thank you, I just wanted to be on record to not support the increase in the parking tickets. If they are designed to make people not do it again, $3 isn't going to make that much of a difference. And I also want to be below Beverly Hills and Santa Monica and all that, so, thank you.
You're welcome. So, staff and City Attorney Barrow, make it clear that the proposal to raise citation fees is denied. The rest of the budget appears on schedule. We will not, I repeat, not have another budget study session. We'll wait for the full item to come back on June 6th, nothing past that point. And we have a motion by Counselor Merhworth and a second by Counselor Polatano. With that, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Well done. Thank you both, Director Sherrillian, Director Lee, Catherine, thank you. Item L, City Council requests and reports, including AB 1234 reports. I know Mayor Tim Franklin has one. First, Counselor Merhworth.
I traveled outside the city limits to the city of El Segundo, I wanted to report for the 2023 water issues forum. I am the council liaison to the West Basin Water District. It actually was a really substantive, good session, included the chief engineer of the Metropolitan Water District, the general manager of the Water replenishment District, the plant manager, the Hyperion Plant, as well as the West Basin Municipal Water District General Manager. The high-level, top-line takeaways are that the recent storms have obviously made a huge difference in our water supply for this year. But because California is vulnerable to extreme and variable weather because of climate change, we have a short relief, but in fact, the long-term prognosis for our water supply is still questionable. The Colorado River, which supplies so much of our region with its water, is being cut back, and there are obviously increasing demands. So as a result, the takeaway is water efficiency still needs to be a way of life in Southern California. And I could talk further, but I presume those are the highlights that people need to hear.
Thank you for attempting to almost leave the bubble. That's good. Mayor Tim Franklin, you want to talk about SCAG?
Yes, so along with Mayor Montgomery, we attended the SCAG conference in Palm Desert, was it just last week?
Yes.
Just last week. It was my first SCAG conference, and so I wanted to just see, we hear so much about SCAG and what they do, how they give us our housing numbers and how they work, so it was really a good introduction. Met during lunch and breakout sessions with people, you know, with, with colleagues in other cities and discussed homelessness, you know, EVs, electronic vehicles, charging stations, so just a, a lot of the same kind of challenges that we're all facing. Some of them want our e-bike safety program, which I think we can, you know, we can go ahead and provide for them. Interesting was the EV, you know, the EV, what's that expression, EV anxiety or EV charging anxiety or?
Range anxiety.
Range anxiety, thank you very much. So that, that popped up a lot during the discussions, and, and it's true, and it's, and it's very real. So hopefully, the state can provide some direction and money and financing, and so can the federal government, because, you know, it's going to hinder the adoption of EVs until that can be addressed and addressed efficiently and fairly. Thank you.
Well done. I would add to my colleague, those who don't do government speak, SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments, Southern California Association of Governments, what SCAG stands for. If you're elected, our staff, they, they waive registration fees, which is good for all of us. It's important for us to attend. And yes, we did offer, Mayor Tim Franklin, services in any cities in Southern California regarding bike safety. Mayor Franklin has a bag, he'll travel wherever he go and talk about that, which is good for us. But that was a highlight of it, I think the only piece that we didn't talk about was the transit, what they're seeing and the governor's plan to, and his theory, the governor's theory is that we'll have chargers up and down the state of California to pull in and charge and rapid go. That will not happen the next five years. They're so far behind with charging, even with federal money, they cannot build chargers fast enough. So those of you wondering, what kind of drive down to California almost without a stop, you know, all the way through, they can't do it yet. So next projections are five years for the state of California will have a complete EV charger system along the highways going forward. So that was my big takeaway from all of that. But that was our report for AB 2024. We're going to move on to item 17, request by Councilmember Merhworth and Counselor Merhworth to discuss electric bike, I'm sorry, safety. Counselor Merhworth?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'd like to get support to bring this back and, and what I'm, what I'm envisioning, so as you've mentioned and we've all mentioned, Counselmember.
Support it.
Great.
That's three.
But I do want to, I do want to give staff, I do want to give a little bit of heads up to what I want.
Is she allowed to expand?
Yeah, now I can expand. Now I can expand.
Yes, she can. Right on, Councilmember Haworth.
Okay. I want to know if there's been any changes or if there's any programs that other cities in California might be doing beyond the safety, which I do think is fantastic that we've done with Councilor, Mayor Potem Franklin's leadership. But things like, you know, is there a certificate program that, you know, if you're 13 to 15, you complete so that, you know, you understand the rules of the road? Or whatever it is, whatever kind of jurisdiction we might have, you know, are there different penalties we can give or, you know, what are the enforcement rules? And what can we do in addition to what we're doing? Just because I, everybody seems to be wearing a helmet now, which is good. Keep it up. They're still, you know, cutting around corners and not understanding how traffic works and stop signs and things like that. So I want to understand what, if there's anything else we could do, if we're allowed to do, we may not want to do it, but I just want to understand what that is. So I, he's still supporting it. I know it.
So you're good?
I'm good.
Direction given?
Well.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Tim Franklin, are you talking about something else?
No, it's going to be about this.
All right.
So I appreciate my colleagues bringing this to council. A year ago, I said, how do you expect children to follow the rules of the road if they don't know the rules of the road? Well, we've taught them, and they're learning, and many of them, probably most of them, are learning well. So I would like to see this examination of increased enforcement. At the time, when we were putting the materials together, I had a couple, several extensive interviews with the police department, like giving your priorities. And we discussed things like the enforcement, working through Beach Cities Health District and their remediation services, also impounding. It didn't seem to be that practical at the time. At least, the police department has enough on their hands where they have to, these are expensive machines, and they didn't want to lose them or damage them in any way. So absolutely, let's take a look. I can, you know, go with a clear conscience, knowing that we taught them, they know the rules of the road, now we just got to get them to follow it, and that's enforcement.
All right. More direction. Councilmember Lesser?
And I would add to my colleagues' comments. For me, I'm interested in what the regulatory environment is in California as it relates to e-bikes, notwithstanding the wonderful efforts that our police department is taking on and Mayor Potem Franklin. We all see some of these just astonishing sights, particularly kids on e-bikes. And I have read that the state of California has rolled back the ability to register bikes. I want to better understand what that is about in terms of the ability of cities to require any sort of registration or any further steps in the regulatory environment. What is within our discretion, I guess would be the question I have. So that would be the direction I would be interested in unless there's objection.
That's good.
I think you're applying direction from four, three members of the council. I will not add to that.
Yeah, I think we have clear direction. We'll report back. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, item number 18. Councilmember Lesser and Councilman Napolitano to discuss the Board of Building Appeals. Who'd like to talk on that first?
I have prepared remarks, other than to say, it seems that we have some really capable members of our Board of Building Appeals, and they are eager to do more than just have a title by their name and never meet. My understanding over the years, as prior councils have sought to come up with work for them to do, and not just busy work, but substantive work, was that there is a state requirement to have the Board of Buildings Repeals, and thus, there's jurisdiction that they have, which is state mandated. But to the extent that we, as a city, want to add certain tasks, certain elements of what might otherwise go through the Planning Commission, or might involve perhaps, for example, we're looking at our outdoor dining, what is something substantive that they can do to contribute and not just busy work that we could add to them? But I defer to Councilmember Napolitano, who was originally meeting in this moment.
No, I would say, yes, we have an incredible amount of expertise on that board, engineers, builders, and more. And we're wasting them away. They're ready and willing and able to serve, but we haven't given them anything to do. And that's a lack of, just because of, as you said, the legal requirements, very few things come before them. But put that expertise to work. Have them as a technical board for review of CIP projects or review of the management of CIP projects, review of other things in the city. I would, you know, ask staff to come back with some ideas as to how we can bring things to them. Like I said, a technical board or a management review board for all sorts of things. They could also be a review of anything from the Sustainability Task Force as well. There's plenty of stuff that they could work on. Again, putting decades of great experience in engineering and project management to work. So that's the idea, and we're looking for a third.
Third.
Okay.
Anyone else? You're good. I have one.
Are you moving on to future gen?
I'm sorry. Yes, I was ahead of myself there. Item M, future items. Let me make, anybody else has any items to go first? Seeing none, I have one. To propose that we look at the OTS Roundhouse and their outstanding invoice from COVID and the loan payment, to hear what options we have regarding a waiver regarding the OTS Roundhouse. And that's my first. I have a second.
A second?
Mayor Tim Franklin is my second. Do we need a third for this?
No, that's enough.
There we go. That's all I have. Anyone else on future gen items? Item M. Seeing none. We'll move to item N, City Manager Report.
Yes, I have two items, actually. Given the nature of the length of the meetings typically in August due to vacations and our desire to not put very weighty things on late in the summer because of vacations, I'd like to see if the council is open to going dark, the second meeting in August, which would be August 15th, and not hold a meeting. So that would be my first request. And the second is, well, let's get through that one first.
Colleagues, Councilmember Lesser?
I want to push my button first, Mr. Mayor.
Please. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to make sure, Mr. City Manager, that there are no substantive items that staff feels that they would need to address in August, because there's no reason to have a meeting if there isn't something that you need to keep moving. On the other hand, just want to make sure there is something.
As it stands right now, the only thing that was tentatively for that evening is what was discussed earlier on the stormwater assessment, but that can easily be moved one meeting on either side of that. So as it stands now, there's nothing substantive scheduled.
Thank you.
Councilmember Napolitano?
I have consistently railed against taking meetings off calendar, but knowing how these things have gone, and the point being, if things are adding up, if we had consistent, you know, meetings to midnight, then I would say no. We're having manageable meetings now, so I'm not going to speak highly in favor of it, but I won't speak in opposition to it.
I appreciate that.
Wow.
Mayor Tim Franklin, are you good with that?
I'm good with it. I'm checking my calendar just to make sure.
Just really glad.
Calling his travel agent.
Councilmember Haworth?
That comes later.
I'm just glad Mayor, or Councilmember Napolitano can evolve, and that's awesome.
I, well, back colleagues, I agree. I think that we're able to get a more efficient lead. We're done at an earlier time thanks to scheduling and moving things around. A lot of items, staff has put on consent that Alex will help that item for us. So barring no other unforeseen emergencies prior to 8/16, emergency after 8/16, I agree we can delay, push off that meeting and take a summer break, 8/16.
I think it's actually the, is it the 15th?
15. I'm sorry. One, five.
Yes. Great. Thank you. Second item is, as has been mentioned earlier today, Terry Hackelman, our IT director, is leaving us. He's been with us for almost three years. And while Terry doesn't like to be in the spotlight, I did tell him that I wanted to say a few kind words here about him, because he's been such a tremendous asset to the city in the three years he's been here. You know, I think we've all rested well, knowing that our cybersecurity is in top-notch shape. That's a pressure that I put on Terry the minute he walked in the door and made sure he got no sleep over the last three years because of that. But he's done so much else for us in terms of just our help desk and our cloud-based systems, certainly EnterGov, our permitting system, as well as the financial systems, the support he's provided to all the systems that we have over the three years has been tremendous. Terry's had to make some tough decisions on many topics, and he doesn't hesitate to do so. Terry is going back to the private sector because his skill set is so in demand, and he's so on top of his game that, you know, it was eventual that we would lose him to some higher calling, at least in terms of what his skill set is. So I wanted to recognize Terry, thank him for his service here, wish him the best of luck, and again, thank you, Terry.
Well done, Terry.
I was waiting for a poem, but okay.
Yeah.
I'm out of practice.
A lemuric?
I'm waiting for artificial intelligence to do that for me.
Oh, you could totally do that, yeah.
I was a war-tied Terry's Director Hackelman's honor. Nothing further?
Nothing further.
City Attorney Report?
Nothing tonight.
All right. Informational items are there. We are going to move, folks, to item Q, a closed session. And with that announcement, open session of items to be discussed, a closed session. City Attorney Barrow?
Yes, pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 57.6, the City Council will now go into closed session to have a conference with its labor negotiators with respect to the Manhattan Beach Firefighters Association.
This time recess and a closed session. We'll be back. This time recess in the closed session. We'll be back.